Turn it over to Chief Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Just before you sort of the presentation that we have for the board and department. Just to remind the board that we discussed this three, four months ago. We went over some of the things that we're going to talk about again tonight. Tonight, I'm just going to hit on the high points as far as the presentation that I presented to you back in late March, early April. So, you know, we could start with that. Again, if you have any questions going through this, please feel free to ask me. Again, knowing that like everybody, as we've seen in Perry and Jackson Township, where the last few months have had proposals or actually passed levies for additional funds because of lack of funding that's coming in. So, we're going to be no different than anybody else is going on throughout, actually throughout the state. If I read some prior articles throughout the state and what's taking place throughout the state, there's a lot of different party permits throughout the state requesting additional funding because of, you know, decreasing in the property values or the loss of renewals coming in. So, just to take it back to some history, 2005, we had a levy put on with an additional eight tenths of a mil increase at that time. And we've been working off of those same numbers, that same levy since 2005. So, it's been 10 years. So, that was passed in 2005. So, we went from a 5.9 mil to a 6.7, and that's where we're currently at. And that generated, eight tenths of a mil at that time generated back in 2005, $890,412. So, you know, with that, you know, obviously, we're looking at different numbers today, and we'll go through this, and we'll see those at the end here. The estimated property tax revenue that we received at that time for our levy was $4,544,000. And again, at that time, at the current time, based on $100,000 tax valuation of a property, we're paying 200, more than $204, almost $205 per 100,000. So, there's an increase of $44 at that time. And then, in 2010, when the levy came back up, we just did that renewal at that time. And taking back, again, you know, just to remind the board, 2005, now levy was passed, there was three things that really was focused in on by the board, and what Chief said at the time, of building a new fire station, hiring additional firefighters, and creating some of that revenue to do that. So, you know, obviously, all that stuff was completed in 2012, but in 2010, we just went back and asked for a renewal at that time. So, back in 2010, the tax valuation of Pike Township was, for us, was $725,315,960, which estimated the revenue for us back in 2010 was, you know, $4,685,000, which is a little bit of an increase from 2005 revenue. So, here's we look at through the history then, from 2005 to where we're at today. In 2005, we brought in a little over $4.5 million in 2005. And actually, 2010, we generated with that tax of 6.7 mil, $4,685,000. And then, in 2015, it's estimated at, you know, $4,481,000. So, you see, we notice the reduction there of funds coming in since 2005. So, the tax revenue estimated for this year, we're actually looking at about a $203,000 decrease in funds from 2010. This is just some historical information from back in 2013, where some of the tax dollars are going, you know, based on the current, those current standards and statistics back in 2013. So, as you notice, again, party permit was $204.98 at that time. This just breaks it down by percentage. So, about 11% out of that pie is what, you know, homeowner or taxpayers are paying regarding fire service. I know that you're aware of the TPD, you know, reduction or phase out that has taken place, and again, you know, we've lost some revenue coming up from that perspective, along with the utilities. Again, some prior articles that have been posted and out there that, you know, throughout the county here and throughout actually the state regarding some of that loss. You also, you know, shown some expenditures throughout the years from 2009 through up to 2014, where some of those funds were at. I won't go into those, we've already reviewed some of these here. So, what we've tried to do over the past five, six years, seven years, to do some cost savings to help save on how much we propose as far as the additional funding that we need, obviously, we've eliminated a fire prevention bureau spot. So, we used to have two gentlemen in there, now we only have one. But we've done with that, I've taken back and had our lieutenant go through training last year, and all become certified inspectors. So, even though we lost Tom as one of our inspectors, we gained on-duty personnel that we already had staffed, and got them certified as inspectors to help assist in, Scott Kelly now is the inspector, assist him in doing any type of inspections. Obviously, we relocated dispatch center, which was a cost savings to us, reduced fire stations, the amount of stations we had. Talk about vehicle replacement, you know, back in our mini master plan, it was set up, you know, years back, you know, we had a 20-year replacement plan for vehicle replacements. Right now, I extended that to about 25 years, and if we don't do something with additional funding, we're going to go to 30 years. And I can tell you, I can show you historically, information about vehicles that are 25 to 30 years old, you're throwing good money to bad equipment, and it's just going to nickel dime you. So, you want to make sure that, you know, we're spending that money wisely when we're doing that. Group purchasing, we tried to do some group purchasing with a variety of different party permits for EMS supplies. We've saved a lot of dollars by doing that. And also, in the, just in the past few months, we purchased a fire hose and some adapters by doing a group purchase, and was able to get a reduction of the cost of that equipment. So, we continue to look at ways of generating, you know, some ways of generating things that we can reduce the cost of how we do business and how we're purchasing. And then, we actually reduced it, and Chief Schallerberg has gone back and even downsized our trash containers at the station to eliminate how big they were in the use season we're getting, and how much they were, you know, how much trash was being generated. So, we actually reduced the size of those to reduce the cost. So, we try to look at everything we could possibly look at, from utilities and trash to reduce costs and have a savings there. Obviously, we do have some additional billing, you know, with our soft billing of EMS, code enforcement, you know, last year, and Troy, I said now, we restructured our code enforcement permits, and the difference in structure of that, to make it up to date as far as what's being generated around the area. So, you know, we do have a little bit of increase in revenue there. We continue to try to write grants or find grants to write when they're available, but I can tell you that that becomes harder and harder to do as time goes on, with less and less money to be generated out there for grants, and not as many grants that are available. And we do receive, once in a while, we do receive some donations, you know, it's probably less than $1,000 or $500 a year we're receiving donations. So, getting back to, you know, why do we need, you know, more funding? I know that there may be some people think that we don't need it, that we're okay where we're at, we're not okay where we're at. And I'm going to go through this and explain to you, you know, the necessary dis-eval, why we need more funding. And when you look at our call volume, back in 2005, we ran 3,600 calls. Last year, we ran over 4600 calls, and we're going to see that continue to increase. So, you know, we can't do the same business we did 10 years ago with less money. It's impossible. Something's going to have to give a break by doing that. The level of service is going to go down. There's no way of getting around it. So, in 2010, we had 4,132 calls, and in 2014, again, at 4,600 number, which amounted to about a 22% increase from 2005 to 2014 over that nine-year period. And just between '13 and '14, we've seen about a 3.5% increase. Talk a little bit about why some of this increase in call volume. We're looking at residential development. You guys all know what's going on right now, and some of the developments that's taking place. That's a given, that's not, we anticipate or we assume that something's going to take place. We know that certain factors already in place are going to start to take place for the next two years. And what I don't want to do is sit here and be reactive to something. I want to make sure that the board understands, we need to be proactive in this service. If we wait another five years to generate more money, we're going to be way behind the eight ball to try to catch up. So, we need to be really proactive as far as looking at developments, and what that creates for services, and how much that costs. So, but we do know, obviously, for a fact, that this residential development is going on right now, and we know some other developments are going to get started, so we look at that. Again, commercial developments, you know, we gained another hotel this year, I know there's another, we've had one of our, yeah, Whitewood is putting another addition on right now, some more residents up there. So, we're going to start to still see increase more call volume just by generating more development going on. So, for us, those numbers at 4,601 we have last year is going to continue to rise. Talk a little bit about, in the mini master plan, talks about goal setting. And, you know, under goal services, coordinate growth and development, appropriate expansion or consolidation of township services, or maintain service levels. And that's what I'm really going to talk about too, maintaining a service level. You know, we can't, we can't continue to maintain a level service where we're right at right now with less money. It's impossible. And I don't care how we cut it, it's not going to happen. So, again, it talks about including funding, personnel, equipment, and facilities. Talks about, number two, expanding automatic aid agreements. We've initiated that, we've expanded on that into Lake Township, the automatic aid with Greentown that comes down in that northern, west part of the township. And we're going to continue to work for that. I know I spent some time with Rob Stormich, the new cassettes that he put in place with the county, that we hope that sometime when, Rob, in February next year, that we're hoping it goes in place, but I'm already working with some other, you know, we're planning on some other departments and communities for automatic aid. I sat and I have talked to Chief of Canton Township also, because they now opened up their Station 3, that has manpower there available on our northwest side too, they also can respond on automatic response perspective. So, again, those are things that I'm looking down the road, the next six, nine months, that we can incorporate into our automatic aid response. Also, we see number eight, talks about decreasing the Township's insurance service office and ISO rating. You know, we've done that. We spent a lot of time over the last couple of years preparing for ISO to come in, knowing that they're going to be coming in in the timeframe. And you all know too, that, you know, we dropped from a five to a three in our ISO rating, which is huge, which is huge. But I can also say that in the scoring process of ISO, when they score and rate our party permit and how they rated it, personnel-wise and staffing-wise, we got a little over six, six points out of 15 on staffing, which is not really good, you know. So, we may have the difference in a lot of other areas, but our staffing levels by the ISO report shows that we're below the standard. And to me, that's extremely important, how we serve the community and how our firefighters safely can serve the community. So, we'll talk a little bit about fire stations. Again, this is a little outdated, because obviously, this came from the mini master plan. So, you know, we're talking about, especially when we're talking about Station 3, and what's going on at the Hall of Fame right now. You know, funding-wise, you know, I guess none of us maybe, at least I don't have a personal blog, who'll know exactly what's going to take place there, but I can tell you, if that gets developed over the way they, the way they all talk over there, that's going to be a huge impact on our services over there, and how we provide services. And then, that fire station where it's located is probably not going to be a good location to serve that section of the township. Now, right now, there is no funding available to provide or build another fire station. So, again, I just want to make sure that the board understands, we look at that, whether we start looking at property and sort of, you know, talking to some people in that area over there, to maybe, to, you know, evaluate that, and see what may take place there. But, you know, again, I don't know, I'm sure how far the agency is going to go, I know what they've said, but again, who knows, you know, down the road. So, but I think that's an important issue that we should all be addressing and looking at, and working together to evaluate that. Talk a little bit about our equipment replacement again, you know, this, again, based on a 20-year replacement. And we talked about in 2012, which was obviously three years ago, a rescue truck. We didn't buy it, we're just in the process of getting that delivered, but I didn't buy just a rescue truck, I incorporated that as a pump rescue. So, we saved ourselves again about $450,000 by doing that, you know, instead of buying separate equipment, so we combined it, which, you know, tried to save some money there. But again, we're two years behind where that truck should have been replaced based on the 20-year replacement cycle now. You know, so you start looking at some of our aging equipment, that I've given you, and you have information on the age of that equipment, and I'll have it up here in a second. It's important to make sure that we're maintaining this equipment properly and replacing it when is needed. So, when you look at our, some of our equipment, you know, we have the, you know, variety of different equipment, the years, the years that that equipment was purchased. And when you look at an 88 and 89 truck, you know, those trucks have actually, I'll see their days. So, we look at this 88 and the 89, we have a 90, our other trucks are 93, you know, those trucks are, you can do the math on how old those trucks are. And I know we just continue to throw money into those trucks just to keep them running and keep them moving, and at some point in time, I just see us throwing good money to the equipment, it's going to start costing us more than what it's worth. So, you know, I just want to make sure that the board understands that. We've talked a little bit about our aging of our personnel, and years of service that we had here, so, you know, I've given you that information. Next thing we're talking about, which is, again, hugely important to understand, and that's NFPA 1710. NFPA 1710 basically talks about staffing of prior fire departments. There's NFPA 1710, and there's NFPA 1720. 1720 deals more with volunteer or combination departments. If we are a full-time department, we strictly deal with 1710. The 1710 basically talks about organizational deployment, how we deploy apparatus, how we deploy staffing or personnel, fire suppression operations, how we operate, our medical emergency operations, and our special ops. Special ops could be, you know, rope rescue, water ice, that type of things, as in that. So, I won't go through all these slides for NFPA 1710, I know I've given you a copy of that, you have that, but just a couple of little high points in here, that the, you know, fire suppression operation shall be organized to ensure that the party permit's fire suppression's capabilities, and that's a key word there, our capabilities encompassing development of personnel and equipment and resources for initial writing companies on initial fire alarm and assessment for those additional alarm assignments. You know, right now, we don't meet that standard for the numbers we generate internally here. So, you know, again, you know, we do the best we can with the numbers we have. You know, do I feel comfortable with time? Absolutely not. Do we have automatic aid, you know, they're coming across town? Yeah. But again, that's still seven, sometimes seven, eight, 10 minutes away, 12 minutes away. So, it's important, you know, you know, fire spreads every minute, it expands, doubles in size. So, again, you can do the math. On the initial writing company, talks about the party permit under 5.2, 4.1, 1.1. The party permit suppression resources shall deploy to provide the arrival of an engine company with a 240-second travel time and 90% of the incidents. Again, we talked about relocating fire stations and centralizing, that helped us gain that response time by centralizing that station, so we can go in different directions, more centrally located than we were before. Personnel assigned to initial writing company shall have the capability to implement initial rapid intervention crew, which is, intervention crews, a rapid intervention crew is basically the firefighter goes down inside a fire, and they have a flaps, so we have people on the outside ready to go in and assist them and get them out. And most departments right now are bringing mutual aid or automatic aid in to do that, because nobody has enough manpower to do those type of assignments. So, I'll go through here, basically, what NFPA's, number-wise, here's what it's telling us by numbers. We have to have an incident commander, we have to have somebody operating a pump, we have to have two firefighters on the hose line or the attack line, or the suppression line to put the fire out. We have to have two more firefighters as a backup line. We have to have one firefighter as a support on that attack line. And same thing on the backup line. We have to have two people for fire, for search or rescue, and then two other firefighters for ventilation purposes. We talked about two firefighters assigned to RIC, Rapid Intervention Crews. If we do any type of aerial operations, we need these two firefighters for that. So, right there, we're talking about 16 firefighters in need to complete those general alarm assignments, the first response assignments. And you know our numbers right now, we don't meet that. Other considerations, you know, that we have is, you know, we talked about, NFPA talked about assigning a safety officer, they talked about sufficient origins, and talked about signing accountability officer, water supply officer that we don't have, if we don't have hydrants, you know, we bring our, obviously, our water in and set up a water show with our, for the tankers, additional command staff, additional firefighters for suppression. And again, those are some of the roles that automatic aid and mutual aid will fill in with, okay? As far as some of those other considerations. But the main response, the 16, again, we don't meet. So, again, we talked a little about, you know, how many is good enough, you know, for the party, for this, for Pike Township. And when you do some comparisons, and I try to do some comparisons based on comparing apples to apples, as far as full-time staff, looking at populations a little bit, and look at the call volume. So, we computed some of that data based on, based on some of those numbers. So, when you look at, you know, at the bottom line, we're looking at the ratio here for firefighter to residents in a community. So, when you look at this 757, 711, 578, 528 in Jackson, City Greens, 570, so pretty comparable. Menter, 47,000 population, a little more call volume, 87 firefighters, 587. Go to Canton Fire, again, you look at about 15,000 calls here, 146 firefighters, population about 73,000, you're looking at one firefighter, about 500 personnel or residents. Then you get to us, 33 firefighters, 4700 calls, 38,000 population, one firefighter for almost 1,151 residents, double what everybody else is, double. So, you know, again, that shows you that our staffing levels are way lower than most And, you know, we're busy, I can tell you, I spoke to the Chief Hoag, I spoke to Chief Bergas from Assland, Chief Hoag from Jackson, Chief Mark Martin from Perry, and we're all busy on how we respond, and we're no different, and I can tell you, Jackson's no different than we are. They're out, a lot of times, they're out of vehicles, you know, they're all on calls, and next call comes in, they're scratching their heads, who's going to take the call for them? And we're no different, we're in the same category, and I just, we pulled this stat up, again, December, January, February, through that 90-day period, we had 27 occurrences where we had nobody left in the stations, we were out on calls. And that's, to me, that's pretty frightening and scary, you know. I sit back, and Chief Schallerberg and I, both, and Chief Kraft, you know, we'll go to the stations, we'll fill in, you know, we just do that, because we, you know, we want to get, make sure that we're there at the station to take an ambulance or take a fire truck if we need to. So, you know, I'm sitting home listening to this radio 24/7, and I can tell you, these other guys are too. And when calls come in like that, and we deplete our resources, you know, we're getting in our cars, we're driving to fire station just to take the next vehicle out if we need that. So, again, those are stats, and I can tell you, Chief Hoag told me he had a picture of all five of their EMS vehicles up all the hospitals, he presented it to the board, you know, that their business were tied up. And so, when you talk about automatic aid, you talk about mutual aid, okay? As long as we're all in the quarters, it all works real good, but we're all getting busier and busier in communities, and, you know, we see less and less of those people trying to respond or help us out, you know? Again, we help each other out when we can, and I'm certainly grateful and appreciate any time any of those departments are able to help us out, and we do the same with them.
And Chief, just to interrupt, when you say automatic aid and the mutual aid, it's still a delayed response?
Yes. Automatic's not as quite as much a delay, but there's still a little bit of a response.
Right, it's still a delayed response, it's better for our people to respond.
Chief, and can you talk to, for the sake of record, I think we probably are looking at monthly performance metrics, and what's given and what's received in mutual slash automatic aid. Just talk through high-level, some of the things you've done with the neighboring communities to help realign those areas to strike a better balance. So, I know for a period of time, we were getting hammered, pulled out constantly by the city of Canton, which the board, you know...
Yeah, and obviously, they continue to call us, obviously, not as frequently, because they're using more private ambulances now, so they're using private service into the city to respond on a lot of their EMS calls. And so, with the Jaxx response, you know, they had some, they had some areas where, you know, that we were going through quite frequently, because they were, you know, communities or residents where, areas where the nursing homes type things that we were responding to. So, we cut way back on those type of medical responses, and we still respond there on fire response, but, you know, the Regency is one of those places where we did a high volume of responses to the Regency, along with Jackson for medical response, and we've cut that out. We've tried to cut back, and we sat down with Jackson, with Chief Schallerberg, by night, Chief Schallerberg and I have sat down with Jackson, to sit down and eliminate some of those areas that were automatic responsive years ago. And then, obviously, with them building that Station 5 and hiring additional people years back, they had a little bit better coverage than now. So, so we kind of, we try to reduce and realign some of those response areas that we responded to Jackson. And then, the north end of the township, again, you know, some of the, some of the businesses on there, you know, where we're bringing Greentown down in the northern part there, we use Jackson, we also use North Canton somewhere there. So, you know, I try to break it up, because you start taxing one service for all these calls, you know, it gets like, to them, it's like, geez, we're going there again, you know, and they're busy already too. So, I don't want to abuse their system either, because they're busy also, and abuse their resources. So, we've tried to realign some of that. Like I say, I am working with, and I've spoken to Chief Canton Township, Chris Smith, regarding, since they've opened that station up, their Station 3 in Myerslake now, that, you know, in the future, we plan on doing some automatic response, incorporating them in the automatic response in that area also. So, but we're going to wait until that's generated with the new, with new cassettes. Anything else, Scott?
No, thank you, Chief.
So, when I'm asking for the board tonight, and obviously, we already went back in May and asked, you know, County for some numbers as far as what they estimate, what that would bring in. Based on that, and based on us evaluating our needs, we're looking at a 2 mil additional on top of our 6.7. A 2 mil will bring in $5,822,124. So, that's what that's going to bring in, based on our current, it's $4,481,593. So, we're looking at about a $1.3 billion increase. Now, you ask, you know, what are you going to do with that $1.3 billion increase? Obviously, 90% of that's going to be used for staffing, okay? And we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Based on what that's going to cost, right now, we're paying that $205 per year, proposed 8.7 mil levy, the owner would pay less than $6 a month, or about $70 a year per $100,000. Okay? And that was given in through the County's office. So, that's what we're looking at as far as dollar amount, and the cost for the increase of that. So, again, what are we going to do with this funding, additional funding? Plan is to expand and enhance our party permit capabilities. Obviously, we're limited what we can do based on the manpower we have right now. So, with additional manpower, we're going to be able to expand and enhance those capabilities with those firefighters and the citizens that we serve, our response times, and instead of coming clear across down on a call, and I can tell you, today, if we were out with all our many trucks out, within an hour's time, today, we have all four trucks, we're on calls. Then we bring another call, we bring another truck across town that kind of more centralized itself. By having more additional manpower, we don't have to do that, we'll have some, you know, we'll have some increased manpower, so we don't have to be moving vehicles back and forth. So, hiring these firefighters and everybody, this would be crucial on how we proceed, you know, not only three, four, five years down the road, but the next five to 10 years. So, I can actually look at this expansion of this levy... So I, and I actually look at this expansion of this, this levy to carry us, if money, if it's done right, and I sat and talked to Chief Schaller about this too, you know, if it's spent right and done right, this should be able to carry us, I'm hoping, for the next ten years.
Chief, with respect to the hiring additional firefighters and firefighters, and we've had this conversation, but I wanted to give, for the sake of the record, we're not instantly going to go out and just add another, because this is going to be phased in and help eliminate some of the issues that we're facing right now where we have large stacks that are actually in, or have, and will continue to, the plan would be to phase and phase it.
Correct.
Year one, it may be this, year two, it's not.
So, you know, obviously, there's, and we look here, we're going to focus on community risk management, we're going to look at our operations, we're going to look at deployment, we're going to look at response, and obviously that'll include safety, safety for the firefighters and safety for the community we serve. But in addition to that, you're right, Scott, we talk about capital improvements, you know, replacement of apparatus, some building repairs are going to need to be taken place, and, and equipment that needs replaced. So I have generated, you know, months back, and you've also had a sheet, a spreadsheet that I gave you about capital, capital improvements. And some of them we're actually working on right now with some planning we still have available. Again, we still need to work in that and focus on that. So, but the phase A of those is crucial. We hire additional guys early on, and then we'll set money aside in some capital accounts to build those up, to purchase some major equipment, some fire apparatus, some building repairs, and some equipment that we need to be working on in that, you know, two, second year, maybe third year, go back and look again in the fourth year of where we're at funding-wise, and again, have additional money to be able to hire some more guys. So we won't be hiring, you know, ten or twelve guys immediately on this, we'll phase A over a three-to-five-year period.
With respect just to buildings and so forth, again, we know this, but I don't necessarily think the public's always aware of it. We've engaged in conversations with local, state, plain local schools, even on training, training buildings and so forth, as a collaborative means to help reduce potentially that expense. But the stark reality of our facility down there is, it's not in bad shape. It's, it's deplorable and it's atrocious shape, and I'd welcome that if I look to go take a look on the yard waste drop box down there. I mean, we've got mortar missing between joints. We've got, and it's one of those, we're past that, we're wanting more money, wanting good money after bad, and, you know, the reality of collaborating with, say, a Canton Township group, very seriously allows us to use the retirement station. We've got multiple resources competing for that, even through shared and collaborative opportunities, it's not going to allow us to get the amount of training that's required, mandated, hold on yards, so some type of structure, whether it's done collaboratively, it's still possible with schools and Stark State. It's going to require
I can tell you, with Chief Kraft, and I've looked at some, some different plans and different layouts and different type of building that we'll be adding up, so hopefully longevity-wise it lasts longer. We're looking two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-thousand dollars to put a facility in that would, would be suitable for what we would need and require and have as far as training. I know that's not getting cheaper. We, we do use that building almost on a weekly basis when that weather allows us to do that, and we've got a tremendous amount of use on that current building. And it's important for us to be able to have a structure in that because, you know, people say, well, you can go to Stark State, well, we can go to Stark State because it takes all of our personnel out of service, we have nobody back here to do that, or else we're backfilling, trying to prepare it over time and then, so we, we try to train on duty. So we're, we're trying to do a cost saves with that also. So it's, you know, it's a balancing act of that. But, you know, it can, it can still work with Stark and try to, try to develop some plans that we can move forward with that also. So, you know, again, the capital improvements, there was a quite a list there that I generated to the board and gives to the board, so you have that available to look at and review Any other questions?
Thank you. Safety, saying, granted, it's been a period of time since I've done it, done it all with our, with our guys. I'm going to draw from older experience, but seeing where we're at at certain, certain points, you know, no other ways, stranger, I don't think I've seen it to the extent that Chief has said while I was, you know, a time ago. I mean, it's, it's concerning, especially when you take a look at, you know, the impact of commercial development, which is welcome in the township, and what it does, and it's good for business, jobs, tax, basically, whatever it is, but even further to the western township, basically, we've got connection to farms, Saratoga Hills, Wicker Creek, what's going to happen over at Edgewood Golf Course, what's going to happen up off of Mount Pleasant there across from St. James. Essentially, our density is only going to continue to further increase, which is again, NASTA Drive, calls, and if you just take the percentage of that population, then the fact that we know, what is it, eighty, ninety percent of our calls are typically EMS? You've got to have, even not looking at the NFPA requirements that previously provided in ISO, where we scored probably a third of what the points were available.
If I thought for a minute, maybe all of it through another five years, it might even decrease. What do you think?
I mean, I, I think it's kudos to the guys that are here on behalf of the department taking this information. I think it's a good gesture of support, but I would challenge the public too to ask our, ask our guys that are out there, and I hope that they're bashful, you know, step away from that, but today step up in the task work because in the past, you know, residents have always strongly supported, especially our safety services, fire policing, EMS, and, and, well, two, but our safety services have always been premier from the aspect of the quality of the business we have within this department for them as well, premier because the public has allowed us to hire those resources, and hopefully they're seeing, they're going to see and understand what the risk of mutual is moving forward with outdated, outdated equipment and stuff that is, to see higher failure rates, and then, okay, now all of a sudden, when we start going from, say, a four-minute and twenty-second response time to, hey, it becomes six, seven, eight minutes because we can't get bodies out even with the help of usual automatic aid, it's very serious. So I know I, I probably beat you behind the scenes on what, what numbers, you know, personnel, what those costs translates to, what we're looking at as far as fleet vehicles, facilities, so I do apply for, because I know sometimes you kind of go, what more could you possibly ask for? But it's all data that's important to, you know, our public, building business case and all.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, that'll close our work session. We're going to call and order a regular